Into order, please. If you all will stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation to be given by Eric Schein.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this wonderful day. We just thank you for the weather that you've been bringing us, the sunshine, and Lord, we just thank you for just the continuous blessings that you have placed upon the city of Lowell. Lord God, we just ask you to give us clear direction and guidance this evening and give us your wisdom so that we can make the best possible outcome. But we just ask you to be with all those that are here today. In the wonderful name of prayer. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Linda Shimko.
Here.
Jerry Foley.
Here.
Eric Schein.
Here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Keith Williams.
Here.
Kendall Stuckey.
Here.
Marty Latham.
Here.
Paula Allred.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. It contains a Lowell City Council minutes from our regular meeting of May 5, 2009, and the financial statement for April 2009. Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some of us.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wants to speak on a subject other than what's on the agenda? If not, we'll move on. Next item is an ordinance restricting parking in residential districts in the city of Lowell, Arkansas. The next item on the agenda is a report from the ad hoc committee considering this ordinance. We have a draft which we are here to review. If we reach an agreement on this matter, we will bring a final copy back to our next meeting for the approval process. Any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, council members. I put a sheet at each of your locations that are comments from our code enforcement officer. I gave the draft ordinance to both Johnny Hines, our billing inspector, and Donnie Parsons, our code enforcement officer, for their review and comments as they're both out in the field quite frequently observing situations such as this. Ms. Parsons is quite concerned as he will apparently be charged with enforcing this if passed. His comments bring up very valid points, and I have to agree with all of them. His comments did not even address the cost of paving a parking pad. At the current price of concrete delivered of approximately $100 a yard plus labor, the cost of a 10 by 40 parking pad would run between $2,500 and $3,000. Times are tough enough right now without forcing residents to spend money they hadn't planned on spending just to satisfy a few. It seems to me that we are once more trying to force fit square pegs into a round hole by dictating to property owners how they can and cannot use their property. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Anybody else wish to speak? I'll close the public forum. Any council member comments?
I have a major question about this. I thought we had talked last time we even talked about this and had chosen to table this issue.
As far as the paving issue, it isn't a requirement to pave unless the area becomes rutted. Now, we can certainly, and again, this is a draft ordinance. It's the purpose of it is to discuss it. And I mean, it can certainly be improved if paving is an issue or if we feel that's unfair.
And basically, the way this ordinance reads, that all motor vehicles have to be parked on the driveway.
There is overflow parking that's allowed, which was what we had discussed at our last meeting.
So we're gonna have.
Adjacent and parallel to the.
Have motor homes parked on the driveway?
Pardon me?
Motor homes and boats and ATVs must be parked on the driveway?
This is about auto vehicles. You know, the, we have an ordinance in the land use plan, section.
754.
754. Is that the ordinance?
The ordinance.
Ordinance 75, it dictates what you can do with your RVs and all that. That's there. We didn't create that. That was created a long time ago. This is about cars.
I don't know. I can see where motor vehicles could be saying, okay, if it's a motor vehicle, if it's an RV, it's a motor vehicle. It's a boat, it's a motor vehicle. And they'd say, it would tend to tell me that this ordinance says that's gonna have to be parked in your driveway or overflow if there's not room.
It looks like it makes a conflict with the ordinance that we already have on.
Yeah, because those are motor vehicles.
You know.
Tom, would, would, the way this written, would it include RVs and ATVs and boats?
Yes, sir. Those are gonna be classified as motor vehicles. So typically, what the code enforcement person would do would be look for the more specific of the two, you know, which one is more specific. If there's one that says motor vehicles, including RVs, da-da-da-da-da, shall do the X, Y, and Z, a code enforcement person, just like a judge, will look to that first. But it's much, we would certainly, in continuing to improve this, if we go down that road, we could make sure we say something along the lines of this isn't meant to repeal or anywhere, anyway, modify regulations that are already applied to, and then list out those other kinds of vehicles. We can do that.
I think we do need it. Donnie had made a point in his, that we needed to include the fine specifically, and then who would be enforcing the code specifically. That needs to be addressed as well, which we didn't discuss that in our last meeting.
Also, I think we need to exclude backyard parking in this ordinance. I don't see where it does exclude it.
You referring to as far as regulating it? Because right now.
Say, we're not dealing with it, basically, just.
Because right now, this does exclude it in the fact that you can't do it.
It just doesn't mention it. So it assumes that the only place that you can park is what is listed. And that's the way I read it. I could be wrong, but.
Right.
The intention was this was to be referring to the front yard.
I wouldn't agree with that. I would've thought that this, your backyard was your backyard, and you can do what you. But it doesn't mention it. It just.
It's already regulated. It's already something on file.
What you can do in your backyard?
Yeah.
And what is that exactly?
It was in Section 8. It tells you what you can do with RVs and all that stuff.
Hey, but what about your car? Does it regulate what you can do with your, you wanna park your pickup in your backyard?
Talks about boats, trailers.
Both trailers and recreational vehicles.
And do we, do you have a copy of that, Marty, for, you know, I can't, I have not read it, okay?
Don passed it out last council meeting.
It was what?
Don passed us all out a copy last council meeting.
Oh, he did. Okay, well.
Last time, not.
I guess I left, I thought when this was put to bed or written, you know, I thought we was done with it. I didn't, I didn't bring my copy tonight about my past.
My next, my next question's gonna be the fact that, you know, it doesn't say anything on here about people that already live in places that don't have paved driveways. I mean, are we gonna start regulating those homes that don't have paved driveways? I mean, basically, they have two ruts out in front of their house. That's their driveway.
I don't think we can.
No.
If you're looking at me, I'm saying no way.
That, that's exactly what you're saying here, is they're gonna have to pave their driveway. And if they have.
I think that would be grandfathered in.
An acre driveway. Well, then wouldn't everybody be grandfathered in?
But it has to be in there.
You know, we threw this out because we promised in 2006, when we looked at the parking, we'd go back and look at it again. That's why this got brought up. What I'm hearing, though, because this is what now the month is, is June, and we've been fooling around with this since November. We're not coming to a consensus, and that's what the city government's about. And if you can't come to a good consensus, it might be something that does need to be tabled. But we can honestly say, and we can honestly say, we really did look at the issue, and we really did try to address it. We couldn't agree on what was best for the citizens of this town. I'm like, Don, I don't wanna cause people, you know, cost right now is just not really something. The way it's written, we are getting closer. And, and I think Mike brought up something last time we talked about it, and it's a valid concern, is the safety of the people in the houses if they have cars piled all around them. So, you know, I, I think we're getting closer.
I mean, why not, why not just dump B and keep A? And A talks about parking in front of your door, restricting.
Well, A is good. A is good until it gets to the motor vehicles have to be on the driveway. That keeps them from being able to park in the backyard or anywhere else, so, I mean.
You could, you could stricken that from, from the A, and then A just specifically goes into no parking in front of your door, which leads to in front of your house where, you know.
Emergency personnel.
Emergency personnel can't.
If you stopped it right there and then got rid of Section B.
You're gonna take care of a lot of the parking, the, a lot of the nuisance, because I don't think anyone cares if someone parks inside of the driveway.
Oh, okay, about who would administer it? Since it's a safety issue, should it not be administered by, can the, I don't know, the fire department do stuff like that?
No.
You wanna ride around, Mike, and see who's safe and who's not? I mean, who would administer this? I mean, who would determine what's safe and what's not safe? If, if that's all it's based on is the safety issue, don't park in your front yard so that emergency vehicles can't respond, who would, who would administer this?
Asking me?
Anybody?
Mike and Joe.
But I would think, couldn't, couldn't Donnie make that assessment also if he saw someone's car parked 10 feet in front of their door, if he's driving by? I mean, he could, it's an ordinance, he can enforce it, right?
I don't know.
I think both of them have jurisdiction to at that point. It's my thought, but.
How big a concern is this? Is it really and truly for the fire department?
If it's, if it's one vehicle, and that's the only vehicle we got, if I could go through the garage door instead, come up and turn the garage door out, so, I mean, I mean, that's not what it does, but I won't make no self play in, that's reality. But if you got, for example, two or three cars, one bunch of them, and another one to the end and going, to lock that access, it's a problem. But other than that, it's true, where we can't get access at all, we'll lock a couple vehicles, your dog, your will, the engine and outlet, fire roads, uh, that type of things, uh, the equipment you need, uh, you don't have the time, I don't mean this is not bad, you literally don't have the time to say, how am I gonna get around it? You need to be able to just pick up these equipment and go. And in our business, that's the essence of jobs, is emergency, is exactly what's it, you don't have that extra, that extra minute or two, that sort of, that arrangements to get around with things, can't make the government somebody walking out of the house or dying in the house. I don't think you want that much, but that's on true.
Valid concern.
In my line of perspective.
Now, with that being said, you know, like I said before, I am all for something that, that makes the job easier for our emergency workers. But we also have to take in consideration, we have some places, like we have a, a place just a couple of blocks down the road, that all the residences, it's, there are several dwellings in a row, and the parking space for those people is right in front of their, their front door. You know, we have apartment complexes, that the parking for the dwelling is right in front, I mean, so we're gonna have to make sure that what we state here takes those things in consideration, because, you know, that is their parking. That's where they've been parking for years. And, you know, if we take and put this together where we have Section A, and our only concern is for emergency vehicles, I can fully support this. But when we start going and telling people that they can't rut their own yard, they paid for it. They can't. You know, we, we can't go around and slap people on the wrist for putting a rut in their yard. I mean, no lawnmower can put a rut in their yard.
And I don't think the intention was ever to force people to pave. I think the intention was, if you've got a driveway, use it. And unfortunately, there's not a good way for the people that have to enforce it in order to make that happen. And, you know, if it ends up being that we have to accept this for safety reasons and leave it rather generic, I guess I can live with that. Because I feel that part is very important. I, personally, I feel like people should park on their driveway if they've got ability to use it. And, and if their driveway's rutted, that's one thing, if their entire front yard is rutted. Unfortunately, I think that does affect your neighbors.
Well, we've annexed several people into the city that still live on farmland, live on several acres. So, I mean, we're talking.
We've also, as a city, made people that had junk yards out west clean them up, too. So, you know, it just sort of depends on who's doing what at what time. I think the real issue here now has become safety. I, I think, we originally were gonna do this as a tool to help people that really were trying to keep the value of their house up. But I hear that people just need to be able to go do whatever they want to do on their property, and I wish that that were true. I, I wish that we could do that. We can't. But I am concerned about safety at this point. The, I don't know how to put a wording out there that says simply, stay out of your front yard, don't park right at your front door, and in your garage, don't, don't block both your driveway and your front door. It's just real simple words. I don't, it doesn't work for an ordinance, but, and, and you can't dictate, I guess, what we'd like to see dictated. We do in a lot of other areas. Like, you can't dump garbage all over your yard. You can't throw your grass cuttings down your, the drains, because it'll stop up the sewers. We dictate a lot of things now. We already do dictate. We can table this, and we can not address it at all. Because we wouldn't want anybody to be prohibited from rutting their yard. It is absolutely their constitutional right.
Chief and Don, do you guys need additional legislation right now for vehicles blocking entrances to a dwelling?
We have.
We have.
We've had very few fires. We're very fortunate in that we have very limited numbers of areas where this would actually address each time. Because most of our calls, there can't be that many calls anymore. Fire prevention is not our job. Code enforcement is not our job. I guess the best answer that I can give you is driving by several places. I honestly think, oh my, I hope we never have a fire there, because I, we do now with what's called a pre-planning. And in pre-planning, we recognize those situations instead. Do these situations exist when you drive by it? If that was the house that had a fire that day, it would be a problem, absolutely.
I can't think of something in the fire code nor in the building code. It just seems to me there may be something already, there's nothing there in either code that, that says, you know, when you park a vehicle, it effectively blocks.
It addresses streets, Dr. everything on home, but I think it addresses streets, but it's not addressed once you get on the driveway. I think there is one, but there's a camp like.
I can't quote anybody one right now, but I, I, you know, I'd like to look and see, because you may not need additional legislation. It may be there sitting waiting on us. Of course, yeah.
Well, and I'm gonna say this much. I understand that people have the right to rut up their yard, but I feel like for the city of Lowell, it's a real negative. I think the issue with parking and, and the way yards look, it's gonna, long-term, it's gonna end up hurting the town. I think there needs to be something addressed, even if nothing else, from a safety aspect. Because I, you know, I want the town to grow and flourish and continue to look nice. And, and I feel like this is something that's good for the citizens, even though it is a touchy issue. And, you know, if it's safety alone that, that we have to pass this on, then I'm at least for it from that perspective. Unfortunately, you can't govern that people treat neighbors in a neighborly way, unfortunately. There's no way to govern that within an ordinance.
Whatever happened with the POA letter that we had going around about if you had, what, 75% of your neighborhood? Is that still a possibility? Tom?
I believe the committee has met, and my guess is that they've considered all options and looked at everything, and the committee thought this was the best way to do it. We can start again and try something else. But I think the committee was doing, I'm assuming, I didn't go to those meetings, but.
I think as far as the POA, that's gonna be up to the neighborhoods to organize. I mean, they can, they can obviously establish maybe homeowners associations.
They would need the city to make those rules. They wouldn't need the city at all. And those rules probably don't exist in any existing POA.
Seems that, I think we should move forward with the emergency part. I mean, the security, as far as the emergency vehicles access, and somehow define it, like the chief was saying, and then get rid of B. That's, that's the direction I would head. Sounds like we first need to find out if there's an ordinance on the books that deal with parking in front of a, of the door to a residence. And then, so, I guess, my opinion tonight as we table this, until we find out what, what ordinances do we have? Because if all we're gonna do is pass a redundant ordinance that already, already exists, or a code that already, already exists, we're not really accomplishing anything. So, that's kind of where I'm leaning to tonight.
Was that a motion?
I move that we table this for tonight.
I second that.
You realize if we table it, it won't have, it won't come back till you're ready to bring it back, right? Is that what you want?
Well, we, we probably need to find out. We still, there's a lot of information out there that we don't have.
Is that what you want?
Yeah. Because, Tom, that's what you're gonna do? You're gonna find out, or is? We, we can put.
He's the only one that can bring it back.
I'm the only one? You guys can create another ordinance.
Your second to table it. Roll call, please.
Marty Latham?
No.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
No.
Linda Shimko?
No.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
It's 5:30.
Motion tabled. Next item is a resolution to support the 2010 census. We have with us tonight Michelle Chavez, who's a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau. Michelle?
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to support the proposal for a resolution. I work for the Bureau of Census, and our job right now is to reach out to the communities and ask the communities to help us with raising awareness about census coming up. The decennial census is April 1, 2010, and we have to try and encourage every individual who is living in the United States to participate in that survey. The more that we have individuals aware of the importance of that, of the census, and the ease of filling out the survey form, and the fact that the Bureau protects the privacy of all of the, any information that we gather, is, is a challenge to get that message across. As I was listening to you talk about your parking ordinance, and I heard the comment that it seems like it's a simple message to get across, but there's an awful lot of very complicated underlying issues that can have a part in getting that message. And the census is facing a similar situation in that the message is simple, it's important, it's safe because we protect the information, and it's going to be easy because it's a very, it's a short form to fill out. It's a simple matter of answering the questions and putting it back in the mail. But there is a lot of very deep issues that are associated with gathering information, with the federal government being involved. And the more we have organizations and communities stepping up and making the statement that it is important, and we, and you support the application, the, the census and the gathering of that information, the message is stronger and hopefully will resonate better with your community. So, as I understand it, your resolution is to make a statement that the city of Lowell supports and will participate in an awareness campaign to encourage citizens to return their survey form. And I strongly encourage you to pass the resolution.
Thank you, Michelle. Any comments?
What is our, what is our participation?
Yeah.
What is our participation?
Jeanette's in charge of the census. The census is very important to the city because it does affect our turnback money and taxes.
It may affect our ward lines as well after we've gotten the census. But I've been working on it for over a year now with the Census Bureau, and right now, we're being asked to join in a partnership. And the mayor has appointed me as liaison with the Census Bureau on this partnership. Some of the ways that we have agreed to participate is to organize and serve on a complete count committee. And I've been contacting business, responsible business people in the community of different ethnic and different interest groups to be on this complete count committee with me, and we will ask them to partner with the Census Bureau as well. A lot of this is to be able to disseminate the information to hard-to-reach people. We have our marshallese, we have our Hispanic, we have our seniors, we have our typical Arkansas rednecks, we have people that are difficult to reach. And maybe objection we have people that are difficult to reach and may be objectionable to giving this information to the federal government because they're going to come get them or whatever. Michelle didn't say this, but they don't care if they're legal or not, they don't care that there's five families living in a two-room house. They don't care about any of that, they want to know how many people are in Lowell before they give Lowell its fair share of tax money. And so our, our focus is to get that information out to everybody, so that we do get a complete count.
So are we going to be staffing anything, we're going to be?
We're not going to be staffing anything, no, some of the other things that they've suggested we could help with is to distribute and display recruiting material for jobs. There's going to be jobs available, especially bilinguals, providing a space, which might be a corner over here in the chamber, to test people that are job applicants, or a place where once or twice a week, they can have a representative here who will answer questions, and we can have that information, we've already put something in the next newsletter that's coming out. Just encouraging people to return their questionnaires, having a place up front by Melanie for some of the literature available, we can, we're planning on providing a space at Mudtown Days, a booth, and these are, that's just a few of the things, but they're not costing us money. They, in fact, we will have an opportunity to use assets from the Census Bureau, and Michelle's going to be helping us out. But also just saying publicly, which we're doing by this resolution, but that we are in favor of, of this, you know, they want to see big businesses, they want to see communities on board, and it gives validity to what they are attempting to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Jake.
Roll call, please.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
This will be ordinance, our resolution number zero nine dash zero seven.
Anyone wish to call a committee or workshop meeting?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm just kind of curious, do you have a status on the, the insurance information that we talked about a month ago?
That was sent to you.
That was distributed to all council members.
By email?
Oh, I don't get emails from you guys, I don't know why, this doesn't go through.
There you go.
Thank you very much, for whatever reason, I guess, I don't get this, the emails don't come through, I think Tom had the same problem.
Well, this is easy, the employee alone, employee and spouse, employee and children, employee and family, this says, we pay four ninety-seven nineteen.
Oh, okay.
Person pays, they choose all the stuff, pays that much.
Well, thank you.
They don't have the children, they don't, you know.
Yeah.
They can just pay that much.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
Was that from the meeting, last meeting?
Yes.
See, I was absent for that, so what is, what is going on with that?
Uh, there was an increase, I was the mayor explaining.
Can we, can we bring that up, Mayor, and discuss that? And it's on the agenda. The insurance, because I know Paul and myself were absent the last meeting.
Okay.
Did you get this email, or? Okay.
I did, a month ago. I looked at it, but it's been a month since I looked at it.
What do you want to discuss about it?
Well, just where, where are we at, did, did we ever come to a resolution that night, or?
What we did is I just asked to, I just asked what was going on, because I heard some complaints, and then I just requested just the information on it, about how much the insurance, insurance was going up, just for the city council to review and see, you know, how much money did we budget, you know, for the addition, or for the, the premiums, what the city was going to pay for the premiums, and just see, you know, I guess, just, just to see the numbers.
So the city was going to match the same amount they did last year, it's not like they cut that back, correct?
They did, the city cut back.
Mary.
You know, we cut it back, city's paying forty percent now of the dependent, the employees' dependents. We're paying a hundred percent of the employees' insurance, and forty percent of the dependent cost.
It was sixty, correct?
They're, the, the employees paying sixty percent of their own, own dependent cost.
But it was sixty, or?
Well, it was, um, they were paying two hundred and fifty, and we were just picking up the rest, whatever it was. Some of them were eight hundred dollars amount, and, and we were picking up that, rest of that cost.
Now, did, did the insurance go up overall?
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys saw a pretty high premium, how, how, what kind of percentage was that, do you remember?
Well, it went up five percent.
That's actually really good.
Actually, it's five point five or something like that, a little over five percent. Yeah, it was good because we, I worked hard to keep it down.
Ours, my company's went up thirty percent this year.
Your company what?
Went up thirty percent. You guys are sick.
That's what, they told us that some were going up thirty percent. We had a good experience the last couple of years.
You need a better negotiator.
Said they can, they can, they can get to nineteen, but still, it's not, it's a lot more than five. I think that's a job offer, Mary.
Eddie, Paula, did you have some comments on this?
No.
Oh, okay. Anybody else?
I do have one question, the Lincoln Street, do you know when they might be able to, to repair the area over there adjacent to Apple Blossom?
I can't answer that, Eric, it's scheduled to be completed in January twenty-ten. It was moved back one month because of the weather, and that's all I can tell you, is we don't get a daily schedule from.
Right, I understand, I've already, I've, I have witnessed, there's already been one accident there due to the fact that they've actually cut into Apple Blossom to do that repair, and I was just curious if you might have any idea.
Isn't it, isn't, isn't there markers up there, stay out of it?
There are markers, but they're actually into the, the lane of traffic on Apple Blossom. So it basically cuts it down to one and three-quarters lanes instead of two lanes of traffic.
I don't know when they're going to have it finished.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? One more item, the museum committee meets on the second Tuesday of each month at six P.M. at the museum. There's no other items, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
If no objection, the meeting is adjourned.